City council meeting, buckets. That was a tough one to get on. First thing I'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a roll call, please, Kristi.
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Doning.
Here.
Morset.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odean.
Here.
Okay, next we'll move on to approval of the minutes from the May 24th rubber meeting, the May 24th Board of Review minutes, and the May 24th closed session minutes.
I saw move.
Second. First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next we'll move on to approval of the bills with Mr. Morset.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I make a motion, we approve the bills in the, on the amount of one million, eight hundred seventy-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents, subject to the comptroller.
Second. First and second on the bills, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. If there's, uh, so, so everybody knows when, if you're here about the, um, annexation and anything to do with that, that will be a public hearing, so you can stand up now and say something, or you can wait till that subject comes up on the agenda and you'll be able to stand up and talk then. It's up to you. So right now, we'll do public comments. If there's anybody, anything anybody'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. And, yep, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, remind, remind everybody to, sorry, Ben. I was gonna remind everybody, make sure you fill out the form up there with your name and your address and let us know your name and address. Thanks.
Benjamin Fox, F-O-C-H-S, uh, twenty-five, twenty-nine, Powell, P-O-W-E-L-L. Fix it, own it, communicate it, understand it, sustain it. Focus. Focus on it. The city is going through its planning process, looking towards its future. And some of the audience may not know that Focus on You is actually an old university communications channel. And so, like, looking over just the last few years, it's interesting looking at plans and things that were done with public comment, several meetings, everything else. And then at a meeting later on, everybody's like, I didn't know when I, I'm banging on this table. And it's kind of funny how the Engager app is actually powered by banging the table. So as people say this, like, we didn't know this, we didn't know that, we didn't, you know, understand that, we didn't know what this is, well, oh, the process was in place years ago. So as people look at this Engager app and all this type of stuff, get involved early, because you shouldn't be surprised at the outcome of these types of things. This, the city is spending a lot of money on these plans, you're looking at annexations and other things, so coming on later and saying, oh, we didn't know this, and we didn't know that, I think that's a poor excuse, as due diligence as a citizen. It's not easy to come to all these meetings, but it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything they'd like to stand up and talk about? Yep, come on up.
Hi, was I supposed to give my name and?
Yeah, name and address.
Yeah, Dennis Nelson, uh, one twenty-seven South War Street, River Falls, uh, five four zero two two. I just had written up, it's about four minutes, so I, you aren't wondering how long that might take. But thank you for allowing me to speak, I appreciate everything that you guys do, and I'm so grateful that we can continue to say the Pledge of Allegiance, especially the phrase "under God," and that has not been taken out, knowing that it is ultimately God's laws that we are under and should adhere to. I'm coming to you with a request that I'll share in a few minutes in regards to one of the flags that we wave on our city. I'm sure many of you know that maybe not all of you do what the rainbow represents, and I did not determine this, but brought God's Word, which is recorded in the Bible, on the meaning of the rainbow. About four thousand years ago, God flooded the earth and destroyed all of mankind because of their wicked ways, except for one family, and the father of that family was Noah and many, are familiar with Noah's ark. And in scripture, it says in Genesis nine, twelve through sixteen, and God said, "This is the sign of the covenant that I make between me and you and every living creature that is with you for all future generations. I have set my rainbow in the cloud, and it shall be a sign of the covenant between me and the earth. When I bring clouds over the earth and the rainbow is seen in the clouds, I will remember my covenant that is between me and you and every living creature of all flesh. And the water shall never again become a flood to destroy all flesh. When the rainbow is in the clouds, I will see it and remember the everlasting covenant between God and every living creature of all flesh that is on the earth." This is how the rainbow began, and we're waving a rainbow flag over our city, not in, in light of that meaning, and I believe that because of this disrespect for God, we will incur his wrath. Colossians three, five through six says, "Put to death therefore what is earthly in you, sexual and morality and purity, passion, evil desire and covetousness, which is idolatry. On account of these, the wrath of God is coming." To avoid that wrath, we have Zephaniah two, three, and this is the last of the scripture, "Seek the Lord, all you humble of the land, who do his just commands. Seek righteousness, seek humility; perhaps you may be hidden on the day of the anger of the Lord." We're in a city that says, "Under God," that we wave a flag that is to be reminded of his mercy, it's to be remind, reminded of his mercy, that he will not do this again, but is flaunting the very thing that he abhors. My request is that we remove the flag and turn to the Lord. I understand the implications of this request, the implications to me and my family and our city, especially in a society that is turning away from God. But we are all accountable in the day of judgment to God alone and not man, and I turn to you leaders who have been appointed by God, each one of you have, to do what is right in his eyes and, and consider, at least consider this request. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything they'd like to talk about? Yep, come on up.
Street River Falls, and I'm here to complain about the sidewalks that you guys planned at putting in. We've talked to a lot of neighbors and that, and the way you, if you could put it on the south side of Kennedy Street, you're gonna take away so many trees, beautiful trees that have been growing there for forty-five years or more, and it's gonna be another forty-five before we get back our beautiful shade trees. And that, so, uh, and I, one of the things that, uh, a couple, few years ago, my husband and I wanted to add on to the front of our house, make a larger porch area or whatever, but we were told we were not allowed to do that because the houses on Kennedy Street were already, uh, built two feet closer to the right-of-way than they were supposed to be. So that's one, that, uh, so by that, that means that the sidewalk is going to be in, pretty close to our, to our houses, and I don't think I want people walking by my house to be able to look in my living room with that, so. And as far as the, it being, um, there for the people that, uh, live in that new addition, I'm sure they'll probably end up going to Glen Park more than, than any thing, because Glen Park is more, uh, yes, the pool, the splash pad, the shelter for everything. Wells Park does, the only thing we have over there is the, uh, tennis court, which is in dire array, needs to be fixed immensely, but there's no water over there, there's no bathrooms over there, there's no shelter. So I'm sure most of the people that are gonna have their kids are gonna go to the, to Glen Park with that. And I've talked to people that, uh, walk by our house and stuff like that, and they say the street is wide enough, they don't know why they'd wanna put a sidewalk in. So that's my opinion. So I'm hoping that, uh, you guys take a little more, uh, look at it and stuff like that, and see all this stuff that you're gonna be taking down and ruining before you do this. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else in the audience have anything they'd like to talk about?
Hi. Mr. Mayor, Council, um, Chris Gagne, four thirty Kennedy Street, um, I, former council rep for the district, um, in that area before it was split with the census. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of, um, a lot of the neighbors, um, some of them weren't able to make it tonight, I think you'll probably be hearing or see some of them in the future. Um, we recently had a park plan, um, assessment of the whole neighborhood, a survey went out, I think, uh, you guys received that from the park board, if you haven't, read that packet and receive that, please. A lot of the things that were mentioned in that, uh, for Wells Park is new tennis courts. Um, that tennis court is the only city-owned tennis court in the city of River Falls outside of the school district. It is highly used, um, you wouldn't know that unless you sit there, you drive by it and you live by it, there's people that come into that neighborhood, they park right next to that park and they use that constantly. I don't play tennis, I don't reap any benefits from it, but I see a lot of people using the tennis court, there's cracks, the nets falling apart. Um, the lighting in that is probably one of the other top things that you see on that survey, um, the lighting is pretty poor. Brian lives right across the street, he said numerous times that he's seen kids in there after hours skateboarding, sitting on the net, that kind of thing. That segues into the next step of more police presence, um, rolling through there, just checking on it after hours, um, we've had a lot of complaints of people speeding in that neighborhood, um, and that's one of the major, probably one of the top complaints on that park survey. I intentionally did not do that survey, intentionally did not speak to anybody in the neighborhood about the survey, I had people try to wave me down about it, and I said, "No, do the survey." That way you got unbiased feedback on that. On the sidewalk, I personally think there should be a sidewalk in that neighborhood, I think there's, uh, a lot of back and forth on what side of the street you put that on. Um, I did my own survey, um, I know the city engineers, um, re, um, Mike Noreen has been out there as well, doing his tree surveys. You have a lot of sidewalks, or a lot of driveways on the, uh, uh, west and south side of the street, um, you're gonna be putting concrete aprons in every single one of those, um, that's a total of thirty driveways. Now, when you think about driving out of your driveway, backing out, all these people that haven't backed out of their driveway in their life and had to look at a sidewalk or anybody on their, um, property driving through there, now they gotta worry about that. You have, um, like, four or five streets that people would have to pull up to, slow down, and look both ways, either way, if you put it on the north side of the street. Um, I know the city engineer, Todd, doesn't like that very much, um, and that's, you know, obvious, for obvious reasons, you're crossing streets and having kids on it, but I, I encourage you, drive down, uh, Kennedy Street, Sycamore, and take a look at this project before you just go slab a sidewalk in there. I'll gladly clear snow for mine, I live on the south side, that's not the problem, you're gonna take out a ton of trees. Um, when you look at the trees, um, on that, you're looking at sixteen total trees on the east and north side, um, and nineteen, sorry, on the west and south, and sixteen on the east and north, so it's pretty even, but when you look at a lot of those streets, and I'm not really counting ash trees in there, because we're taking those ash trees out and replacing them anyway, but when you look at a huge portion of that north side of Kennedy Street, all the way from Kennedy to South Sixth Street is all side yards or Housing Authority, and those Housing Authority properties are either set back higher, they're higher elevated, um, and you're only crossing from Kennedy to South Sixth Street two private driveways, one's on a side garage, um, and one's in a front yard. So when you kind of look at the dynamic there, what's safer, backing out of a driveway over a sidewalk, potentially running over a kid that you didn't see as you're backing out, or coming up to an intersection of Orange, um, um, Orange, Short Street, Oak Street, and Spruce, and you literally have to slow down and look both ways before you get to Kennedy Street. The biggest issue there is you look at the population, there's one row of houses on the whole south side of Kennedy Street, the rest of the population in College View Four District there is, uh, gonna be crossing the street to get to a sidewalk, literally just getting a sidewalk right there. If you go spend any time in the Housing Authority District there, there's fifty-plus kids that live in that neighborhood, in that block right there, not to mention the rest of the neighborhood. So if I seem a little kind of excited, I'm working through some medical stuff there too, so ignore that. If you have any questions, um, I met with Patricia Leroux out at the park about some of the park plan stuff, I, I have a lot of history with the neighborhood, I'd be happy to walk you through any of that, any questions that you might have, and I know if you're knocking any of those neighbors' doors either side of the street, they'd be happy to talk to you too. Thanks.
Yep. Anybody else have anything? Oh, okay. Next we'll move on to, we're gonna have a presentation tonight, Officer Chief Young is gonna, uh, present Officer of the Year to, uh, Ryan Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. When I step up here, Ryan? Just over to the mayor. I'm very excited to be here and do the scheduling, sorry, it should have been a little bit earlier. Um, Ryan is the Officer of the Year for 2021, and what makes this award so special is that it's, um, through his peers, how he was selected. It wasn't because he's, who I think is the best officer, um, it's, it's for all the officers that are within the agency. And he's also very compassionate, um, he displays great leadership and has a strong work ethic. Uh, Ryan started in two thousand and four as a reserve officer, and then he liked the department so much, liked the culture of, uh, our agency and the community, he was hired in two thousand and six. And since that time, he worked diligently on drunk driving arrests and narcotic investigations, and, um, he was then promoted to, uh, investigations in twenty fourteen, and from there, he really excelled. Uh, he's a member of the St. Croix Valley Drug Task Force, which I believe City Council approved before I got here, um, that was a position that we saw back then that was needed in our agency to, to combat all the drugs that were in the area. And he also excels in property crimes, crimes against children, and he especially excelled in computer forensics, and this is critical for us nowadays, most crimes, um, the perpetrators use some sort of communications through electronic means, and Ryan is an expert at that, and I'm not sure, you may or may not be the only one in St. Croix County or in Pierce County that, that presently does it, um, through some retirements. Um, he's also had a dedication to the victims of his crimes, and it's, uh, evident in the quality of his work, he puts them first, he makes sure that they're cared for and they have all the services that, uh, that they need. And if that wasn't enough, Ryan stands out above his peers because he started the Coffee with the Cops back in twenty fourteen, we all love coffee, maybe donuts, and also he started, started the River Falls Torch Run for Special Olympics in twenty fourteen, those are Ryan's efforts. Not only that, um, he, uh, made sure that we're all physically fit, and he started the Run with the Cops in twenty sixteen at the university, um, once again, for the Special Olympics. And through his efforts, he has raised, uh, tens of thousands of dollars, and, which is truly amazing, so congrats, Ryan, um, blessed to have you on our team, and I'm happy to call you the Officer of the Year, so thank you.
Thank you.
I think Officer Miller's a, a great example of the police department in our town, and all the individual officers that go way above and beyond, and we couldn't be happier to have you all here. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, next, we're going to, I think first, Amy, our community director, Amy's gonna give us a little presentation on the annexation, um, ordinance, and then we'll open up the public hearing for that.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'd like to provide you a brief presentation this evening on the annexation petition that's before you tonight. I'll provide just some broader context on the project, um, and then we've got other members of the team that I'll probably look to if, once you get into some specifics of the discussion. So the city has received a unanimous petition for annexation that has been submitted by Mary Thompson, the managing member of the Thompson Family LLC, for approximately forty-three acres adjacent to Paulson and Radio Roads. A unanimous petition for annexation is the most straightforward request for annexation with all owners and electors of the subject property in support of the annexation, and ultimately, this means that the property owner has approached the city and requested connection, in this case with the intent, intent to develop the property. So the city has planned for this property to come into the city, as can be seen by planning documents and tools, which include the sewer service area plan, our extraterritorial subdivision boundary, and our urban area boundary. At the last meeting, planner, uh, city planner, city planner Emily Shively reviewed the four factors to consider in determining whether to approve an annexation petition, and they're listed here. The one that I would like to emphasize this evening is the cost for providing infrastructure to serve the area. Those costs include three hundred and twelve thousand for water main, a hundred and thirty-three thousand for sewer main, and eighteen thousand for curb installation, for a total of four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Though the developer is amenable to paying that four hundred and sixty-three thousand to the city upfront, and just to be clear, that is four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of savings to the city for this project, which is planned to commence this year in conjunction with the new water tower project. So if the product, property is to be annexed to the city, appropriate land use regu, regulations need to be in place, this includes the future land use classification in the comprehensive plan and a zoning classification. While the properties are currently outside of the city boundary, the two thousand and five comprehensive plan, future land use map, designates these parcels for future industrial development. We believe that it was probably assumed at the time that the White Hill Ridge Corporate Park would continue along Paulson Road, although topography and road alignment in the area creates a physical separation of the developable areas in this location. Two prospective developers have provided preliminary concepts for residential housing on the properties. The developers have done feasibility and market studies to determine the viability of residential development in this location, and have found that there is a significant demand for housing in River Falls. In order to proceed with the potential purchase and development of the property as proposed, a change in future land use from industrial to residential is needed. I also want to be clear that no development applications have been submitted, the item for consideration this evening is only annexation. Should the property be annexed and these developers continue in the process, council may be asked to be, to consider a PUD to allow for flexibility for more efficient housing and open space layouts on the parcels. There has been some discussion about other uses being higher and better on parts of the property, specifically commercial on the northern parcel. Please know when the, say, annexation was submitted, staff had discussions about the future land, or the future use, because of the industrial classification and the proposed residential use. After consideration, staff determined residential to be an acceptable use of these parcels for the following reasons. The first is the available lots in our current corporate parks, as well as the current development of the Man Valley Corporate Park. Number two, the overall decline in commercial development. Number three, the typical development pattern of commercial uses, which want visibility and typically right turns of access to their property. This site, in staff's view, is the lowest visibility corner on the Radio Road interchange, and from either the north or south direction, it includes left turns to access the property. Lastly, the extent of commercial interest that the city has seen over the past year in this area has primarily been for mini storage units. So I just wanted to take just a couple minutes to refresh you on our housing study data tracking, these numbers are through January of twenty twenty-two, and they show that based on the projections, we'll need almost fifteen hundred housing units yet. This was a twenty eighteen study, we are looking into an update of this study, and my inclination is that we will see these numbers remain strong if we do an update. There isn't any, um, anecdotal information that we're seeing that, um, would provide otherwise. So zoning classification must also be applied to the annexation area when it's brought into the city limits, there is no zoning classification currently applied to the parcels as they are located outside the city's extraterritorial zoning area. Staff is recommending designating the parcels R3 multifamily high density, uh, consistent with the recommendation for the future land use classification to allow for future residential development. In the discussion with developers, staff is anticipating a potential request for a planned unit development, and zoning classification of R3 provides an appropriate underlying zoning district and flexible for residential development. So before you this evening, there are three things, all are included in the annexation ordinance. The first is the bring the property into the city, the change of the future land use classification, and to apply zoning class in conformance with the future land use. I will let you know that there is an option to defer the zoning for up to ninety days after annexation, if should that, um, seem to be a more comfortable option for the council. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks. So what I'm gonna do is close the council hearing, and I'm gonna open up a public hearing on the resolution, or ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash zero three, annexation of land and right-of-way in the town of Troy, in the city of River Falls, um, parcel identification number is zero four dash one zero nine zero dash six zero dash zero zero zero, and zero four zero dash one nine zero dash four zero dash one zero zero, at Paulson Road and Radio Road, changing the future land use classification from industrial to high-density residential, and applying a temporary zoning classification of R3 multifamily residential high-density. This is the second reading and disposition. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing. Oh, go, go ahead. Sorry.
Folks wanna go first, just because. Hi, my name is Mark Lavery, I'm at Saturday Properties, and we do, I do have a couple handouts, if that's all right to put on the record, if that's okay. Start with you.
Why don't you start?
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. All right, well, good evening, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight, my name is Mark Lavery, I run the development team at Saturday Properties. Uh, we are a, both a development and property management company that's based in the Twin Cities. Uh, I'm actually happy to be working back in Wisconsin, I am from, originally from the Milwaukee area, so it always feels good to be on the right side of the river in my mind. Just to let you, I was here la, you know, for the meeting last month, um, so heard the hear, you know, heard the comments that we received at that meeting firsthand, and then also took a look at it as well. It's good to actually, after we hear it, let things sit in after we've done some more work and follow up on those comments. Um, so since then, I've had numerous discussions with city staff, and the one thing I wanna be here is, you know, what we heard loud and clear is, you know, we wanna understand what, what could a commercial, can commercial work here, and is this something that could be viable either for all of the site or a portion of it as well? That's so, so what we did is, we've spent a lot of time with myself and my team, um, looking at those options, and just by terms of background, I actually started my career doing, uh, doing commercial real estate, I worked for Kohl's Department Stores, so I was doing corporate real estate with them, essentially going around the country, finding new store sites, and then also, as a part of that, selling parts of our parking lot, you know, for their older stores that were overparked, to like a, a Chick-fil-A or an Aldi, something like that. So have, you know, so have some experience of that, but I, I've been out of that for ten years. So what I wanna do is follow up with the folks that are, that are still living, breathing this every day, and it's helpful, one of the folks I talk to every week, he reps one of the largest, or one of the large grocery chains here in the Midwest, he covers Wisconsin for them, and he himself is a franchisee for Pet Supplies Plus, um, so something that he kind of lives in more of that smaller retail space. So picked his brain on, first off, you know, overall what's going on in the commercial world, I think a lot of that we think is retail. Just last month, um, ICSC, which is the International, uh, Shopping Center, Service Shopping Center, bear with me, um, it is in Las Vegas, it's a really, it's a conference that every retailer under the sun from around the world comes and says, "Here's what we're planning to do, here's our growth plans." It's continuing to see lower and lower and lower folks turning up, and frankly, when they show up, it's a lot of the former commercial developers saying, "Okay, we have this pad, how do we turn it into housing, how do we do something like that?" The main feedback we're hearing is there's general concern from that entire industry of what's gonna happen next. I know we always like to think of Amazon, it's like, okay, well, how does everything evolve in econ, but it's, it's not just that, it's, it's services as well. What are the facilities we're gonna need? Because when we think of commercial, it's just not a restaurant, it's, it could be, it's a dental office, something like that, what, what is that need to be? So there's a couple things, number one, it's just that uncertainty of what the needs of staffing are gonna be. Obviously, even more so in the last couple months, it's being accelerated by inflation, not helping with construction costs on that front, you know, folks have You know, folks and companies have been budgeting for some time, you know, show up and say, oh, by the way, that's twenty percent higher, you know, and that no longer. It's okay, well, maybe we can stay in our space, or we don't need to do that expansion. That's a reality of what's happening too. One thing, just specifically, we think about smaller businesses, and this is helpful for more personal level. My sister-in-law is a dentist, she just built a new practice in the Oakley area. That's one where, you know, as a firm, you know, you have to, you have to take out a lot of debt to go and pay for a new building if that's a new structure you want to want. Many small businesses can't do that, specifically just to go and, and get a brand new building. So when we think of commercial, often it's reutilizing, finding ways to repurpose those buildings that are somewhat obsolete in today's age that now work for something that's new. So that's just generally what we are, you know, in the commercial, but now looking more specifically for the site. I mean, that's, that's really what this is about, is commercial, you know, looking for that here. Couple of things that just right away off the bat was just feedback, um, there's just not enough rooftops nearby. So there's a saying that's gone all this hill, is retail follows rooftops. And if you look at the map here, I mean, it's, it's just not there yet. So that's, um, that's the first thing they're looking at. When they look at their trade areas, it's what's nearby, who's gonna be here, and there's just, the, the houses just aren't there, and that's where their customers are. You know, it's not, not a trade area of a hundred people, this needs thousands and thousands of folks to support it. The access, as was mentioned, does make that easy. I mean, folks really like to have convenient access. Specifically, we think of some of those fast, you know, if it's a fast casual restaurant, if we think of gas, they need to have it be very convenient. This site is almost approaching kind of what we determined I learned in my first internship, and it's a Statue of Liberty site. So you're gonna see it on the highway, but you're actually, if you're not from the area, you're not gonna know how to get there without doing the, the loop of roundabouts. For some retailers, that's gonna be a non-starter. Just say, you know, this is not the easiest way to get off, folks are gonna get confused, and we're gonna lose folks that way. We talked about topo, or topography was added as well. That's more specific to this corner of the intersection, so first page I included was just specifically this site, just to show the constraints there. But if we look at, you know, the different corners of the intersections there, this is the corner that's really impacted by the topography that's on site. And you have to think, so if you have a, if you have a commercial building, that thing's gotta be flat, and then you think your parking lot's got, everything has to be, and everything has to be essentially at grade or that minimal plane to make ADA. So when you talk about a building of size and that parking, you're, this is gonna be substantial site cost. And when you think about the opportunities that are around here, that's where, it's this one, um, and that was the exact feedback that say, not that corner. You know, that's, and that's really what we're looking at here, is are there other options? And that's really was the next thing I, was I heard is, is specifically, we were talking with the municipality, not far from here, about, uh, two months ago, and on, on an active adult project that we were looking, they have one commercial known that has left. It's a smaller municipality, they have exactly one site, that's its own commercial. You know, so we went them, you know, talked to them, understood it's, this is our last one we have, there's really no other opportunity here, and it's like, yeah, we get it. You know, you have a constraints, constraint spot in that case, that makes perfect sense. I think with this one here, and that's what, just looking forward, you know, there's, there are a lot of opportunities if you're a retailer to come in and say, okay, where can we go? We look at the southwest corner, that is the most, you know, obviously, that's not annexed in yet, but that has a lot of opportunity there. I mean, large site that can go long distance, relatively flat. And then you still have all the infill development that's on the northeast side and northwest corner of that intersection too. Because when it comes to that size, that, that size doesn't matter, because it's, we need to have, you know, for these retailers, they don't want to go there themselves, so they need to have that critical mass, and it might not just be for like, hey, we might only need four acres, but we need to make sure that we have enough other folks coming along with us. So that's where we get into that, that critical mass, and that, frankly, that code, that co-tendency is a thing you'll hear as well. We really like to be by, if it's grocery, we really like to be by pharmacy. Those things, they all start needing to go together, and now it makes the spatial needs even more. So that's, again, looking at what we thought were the challenges to do straight, you know, just do commercial on this site. And again, helpful feedback as we look at this on some of our existing projects, as I mentioned, one of our peers that was doing, you know, does this for a living himself. Uh, one thing we did try to take a look at was how do you make, you know, do, can we carve out a portion of the site for commercial? So the first page, that, that blue star, that is really where the access point really needs to be, you know, this is after discussions with city engineering. Where does that need to be? It needs to be a safe distance from that roundabout to make sense. So once you have that piece there, it's, okay, well, where, you're gonna have to double all the way back, and that retailer's gonna wanna be as close to that hard corner as, as possible. Again, now we're creating kind of that goofy access scenario where, again, folks are trying to, you know, they wanna make it as easy as possible for their customers. And then the other notion, okay, well, what if we go on the far east side of the site? You know, put it there, and then now we run into that notion of they want to be backed up to thirty-five. So this is that challenge, is we're kind of moving, if you picture kind of a square, as we're shifting into rectangle and moving it around the site, where can this go? And, and that's where we keep running to is, yes, if, the answer is, could you carve out a parcel? The answer is yes, but the answer is, I don't know anything that can go there that's gonna be feasible at this time. And again, once you carve out that parcel, they're gonna say, well, that's just not us over there. So I just want, again, I share all that, and I, I do more feedback, because I know the folks are here to talk, so if there's more questions I wanna sharing, happy to do that as well. One next thing I want to just talk about is, is, is what we keep hearing about and, and speaking with, with cities and, and mostly chambers of commerce, and is what the massive need for, you know, and then obviously from housing, housing is a huge need. But we talk about companies, when we talk about these businesses need, they don't, they're not asking for enough, for more competition, they're asking for employees, they're asking for more customers. And specifically, I mean, the timing was, uh, pretty interesting, just last week, right across the highway from this site, they had the, the session that was in place. So James Wood from competitive Wisconsin was there, spoke specifically, and this is the, so this isn't his direct quote, this is the quote from the River Falls Journal, but, but Wood argued housing is the most important factor to increase business. He said, job opportunities are available in the city, but nobody can fill them if they don't live nearby. And then another quote was, Wood added, increasing housing opportunities leads to more generated revenue for the city through taxes. So that was just last week, that was just across the highway. I mean, that's, that's, and that's not unique here, we, we talked with other cities throughout the state and the, and Minnesota area, and this is what we're hearing too. It's all the help wanted signs, where are my folks gonna be? I wanna just, you know, we talked about the financial impact, so what Stafford put together was the cost. I mean, we realize there's a cost to bring utilities out here, um, we have said that we're gonna be willing to pay that, but that's, that's not the only cost. I mean, specifically for that, that's just the cost to bring those utilities, but there's additional impact fees. So those impact fees alone are over a million dollars for this project. So that goes to help parks, goes to help libraries, goes to help that infrastructure, not just the sewer line, but that treatment down the way. And if you look, you know, just look in staff report, that's just not to serve our building's needs of that, that goes and helps spread out across the rest of the community. So that's a million bucks extra that's gonna go and help and offset those costs. We realize some of that is due to the added capacity we're causing. I'm not saying it's just a million fifty that doesn't benefit, but that is a substantial number to help with those needs. And then one thing is, you know, we look down the road, our property taxes, we're estimating every year, and I, I know this isn't all go to the city of River Falls, but our estimated property tax bill is gonna be over half a million dollars per year. And I know that all doesn't go to the city of River Falls, but that's a substantial number as well. You know, we talk about other initiatives, other needs in the community, this is something that, that is gonna help that out. So again, I appreciate y'all taking the time, I know, public hearing, sorry what the, the exact time constraints are, so I'm available for more questions and answers after we let the folks talk. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Thank you to staff for taking the time to work with us as well, and thank you for letting me be here.
Thanks. Okay, is there anybody, yep, come on up.
Mayor, City Council. My name's Jay Fletch, Jay Fletch Real Estate, I represent the Thompson family in this parcel. Partial River Falls, I did my undergrad here, I lived here once, I rented one of these rental units that you discussed at the last council meeting, and one of the things that came to my mind, three points to make, and the one was about the rental side. If you look at it, I know it was discussed that River Falls is turning into a rental community, I don't think that's a River Falls exclusive to River Falls, I think it's exclusive to our country. Because when you look at how a bank determines whether or not someone can determine the holding, having that loan and being able to afford it, they look at a debt to income ratio. And the bank, being that they get to give the money out to that borrower, they get to determine for that borrower, how much money they get to spend on housing. Now, when I lived here in River Falls in a rental unit, I went to qualify for a house, because to me, it was more important having a house over my, roof over my head than it was how much housing income I spent. So I spent maybe sixty-five percent of my total income on housing, but it was important to me because I had a place to live, I had a place to sleep. Now, a bank would never gave me a loan for that, because they would have said, no, only forty percent of your income could go to housing. Now, they can make that rule because they've given me the money. So that was one point I want to make. Second point, I think Mark did a really good job driving at home. With the housing need, what comes in with the housing, the people come in, they provide employees, and they apply customers to all these businesses. And then the last thing I want to put is, this is a Thompson family, it's tough to tell somebody what they can and can't do with their land, because if, if the annexation and the high density housing and the residential is not allowed, they'll probably lose two buyers. So you're affecting that family for sure, a family that's important in this community for fifty, sixty years. So those are three points I made, I appreciate your time. I live in Troy Township, I went to my undergrad here, I did my master's at Saint Thomas, my master's was in urban economics, I've been selling real estate twenty-six years, so I don't say that to impress you, I say it to impress upon you, these are all valid points. Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we reopen the council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance annexing certain terr- uh, territory of the town of Troy in the city of River Falls, ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash oh three.
Second.
Okay, first and the second. Questions and comments?
Mr. Mayor, I got a comment, some comments to make about it. I appreciate the comments that have been made about the, um, about the project and about the, about the property owners. I, I, I'm struggling with the northern parcel being R three. Uh, I certainly support the annexation petition, and I, I support the annexation, uh, or the, the zoning designation for the southern parcel, uh, with, with, uh, R three, but on the northern parcel, I just, I feel like we need to be very deliberate with all four quadrants of that intersection as we develop. I, I think it's important that we take our time with those and look at, look at those four quadrants, um, and, and as, as that interchange develops. I don't support residential development on that parcel. I, I, I differ from the, the comments made and from staff. I'm not trying to send a message to staff that I want to slow down development or, or anything else, I just think on that particular parcel, it's better suited for, uh, for instance, a B three designation. I do not want mini storage there, and I would not vote for mini storage there, just to be clear. Some of the things of, uh, allowed in the B three designation, office, medical, medical office, dry cleaners, daycares, furniture stores, hotel motel, professional office space, and a financial institution, just to name a few. So I think there's some other uses that that parcel could be used for. So a- at this point, I guess I'd make a motion to amend, um, uh, section seven for, in, in the resolution, and have it say, future land use clarification, the, the territory north of Paulson Road and south of Wisconsin thirty-five, as described in the staff report, shall be designated a temporary zoning classification of B three highway. And then the next part is the ter- the territory south of Paulson Road is described in the staff report, shall be designated a temporary zoning class of R three high den, high density residential. That was a motion.
I'll second that.
May I ask a clarifying question? Yeah, Mr. Morissette, you're, you're listing those as, as temporary, I don't see, uh, oh, is, uh, I see temporary in section eight for temporary zoning, it's, is that what you're talking about?
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, Ms. Udine, I picked up, uh, not temporary, uh, territory is what I should have said there, I, I apologize.
Okay.
Territory, yep.
Okay, so, so it would, it's not temporary zoning, it's like?
No, it would be, it would be, uh, I picked up, where it says territory, that's, that's the word I should have used, I'm sorry, thank you for clarifying.
I think, um, Alderman, Morissette, and I are on the same page, um, close to this, on this, I actually, before coming here, thought that, um, number seven, the future land use classification, that note should just be struck and eliminated, and it should be sent back to, um, um, the planning commission for them to resolve and clean up, to bring back to council. That is, um, what the planning commission's job is, and, um, in my mind, in my vision, and when you read, um, the statute, what, what they're supposed to be doing. So I think, um, I agree with them, that it should be, that property, it'd be great to have annexed completely, I don't think, um, the north, the northern section being an R three is, um, correct, I think it should be a B three as, um, Alderman, Morissette, um, stated. We talked about that there needs to be more housing in River Falls, and I can't disagree, but we need to be looking at maybe having, figure out a way to have more of a transition. I, 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 I don't know how many people I talked to just this last week that live right now in, um, rental units, and it's like, we would like to buy a home, but we can't find a home, and part of that is because the availability or the surplus is not available, because those people that have those homes, the older people, they have no place to move to. So, um, there's a great example of a neighborhood, Collinswood, which is on the west side of town, if we could look at maybe doing some duplications of something like that, um, it would really open up, uh, the people that are, um, in rentals right now, a chance for them to move and into these homes. And, um, I don't want to say that I'm against people moving into our town, but I'd really like to take advantage, or not advantage, I'd like to take care of the people that are here now, that want to continue to call River Falls their home, and not look to see how many more people can I get to move into River Falls, but let's take care of the people, people that we have right now.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of questions. Um, my first question is for our police chief, Gordon Young. Good to see you, Gardie.
Yeah, good to see you.
So here's my question, right, you know, whether it's an amendment we're talking about, or the plan that's in front of us tonight, do you have any immediate concerns regarding the project we're looking at?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I've got one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My question is for Mr. Simpson. And I know it's hard to predict things, but do you have any thoughts about, uh, the amendment and the potential for commercial development?
Yeah, my advice is consistent with the, the planning staff, I think it's, be challenging to see that as a thriving commercial node. I'd also note that if you, I believe, if you place a B three zoning, high density residential is a permitted use within, which is in that category, so you're not, by, by placing a zoning of highway commercial, you're not prohibiting residential. So if your intent is to prohibit residential on the northern node, you would not be accomplishing that by your amendment. Because it's considered a, a more intense use category, and so there's permitted uses underneath it, such as high, R three, that are allowed, because it's not considered as, as intensive a use. So I just, I don't believe you're accomplishing what, what you're intending to accomplish. You're certainly sending a message to staff that we would understand, but it, you know, from a legal standpoint, I don't, unless attorney Gerhardt disagrees, I mean, you're not, you're not really accomplishing what you, you're not prohibiting residential from going on that. It would, it would still allow the developer to continue with their plans, likely, as we mentioned, through a PUD under B three zoning for high density residential. So just to be clear on that, um, I also don't think, I'm not sure about your ability to, I think you have to do future land use as part of this, that's part of your mission here, the zoning is the ninety days portion.
And to confirm, the B three district permits all uses in the B two district, which does permit, uh, all uses in the R three district, so B three would permit residential uses.
And sort of, just to follow on to that, to, to, I think, the question you're asking me, I'm skeptical, at least given the current information and my understanding of the site, that there's gonna be a grocery store, or a major branch of a bank, or something that's gonna find that an appealing site, until the point that no other sites exist. So in the example was given at the podium, I mean, there is a, an un, there's something I can't an un, there's something I can't predict that if the council said, we're not going to do residential there now, at some point in the future, it's possible, but that is the site that's left in in the community for commercial. And then they might be willing to deal with the geographic constraints, the visibility constraint, the access constraint that I think are all present and have been outlined. And frankly, we're not that front of mind for me away from the project until I had a chance to take a look at the site again and drive out there yesterday. It just, the topography and the way that the interchange is set up, it clearly is the least least favorite for some kind of commercial. If you look at a 2D map and you say thirteen acres next to the highway, it's two thumbs up, right? But then when you start to add in the topo, the axis, I think, and the visit, frankly, they can't see it. I mean, if you're coming from the the north to the south, the site is sunken. At least a good portion of it, unless you can build something up on top of the the node, which I think is unlikely. So I don't, I don't see it short term as a viable commercial site. It doesn't mean that it wouldn't be someday. It also doesn't mean that council doesn't have the ability to say, you know what? That being said, I want to, we want to wait and see if if this develops further. But I I think that my advice is consistent with the planning staff. R-three residential for this site is probably not only a good short term thing, but even medium term and probably even long term. But crystal ball is not, you know, I don't have one, so it's difficult to to say that.
So you're saying that B-three doesn't conflict with the plan that was introduced, but you wouldn't recommend it because that's not the way you're predicting the future, is what you're saying?
I I'm saying B-three is fine if you're okay with a proposal coming in with residential on both sites because that would be allowed. I don't know what change it would, I mean, we haven't polled the developer to see if it makes a difference to them. It would change, would it change some of the PUD things? I mean, instead of being so many feet setback, you're asking for it to be, I mean, it's basically going to be a similar process. So I'm not sure how to accomplish what I think Councilmember Morissette is interested in accomplishing. If you're trying to avoid residential on the northern parcel, industrial zoning is probably your best zoning, but that obviously doesn't meet your desire to have commercial there. So we probably don't have a category right now that perfectly fits what what your vision might be.
What my vision is, is for us to be very deliberate with all four quadrants of this intersection. And I just don't, I don't see that as a good use for for residential. The developer does, the Thompsons probably do, the planning staff certainly does. I don't know that we need to be in a hurry on any of those four quadrants in the city to 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 do something. I appreciate the developer coming forward and and wanting to invest in there. I think more than anything, I'm I'm trying to send a message that, you know, I I'm not saying absolutely no, but just because it's allowed doesn't mean we have to vote for it either. If if we if we zone it B-three today and they bring in a a PUD, doesn't necessarily mean we have to vote for it. And to be honest with you, right now, I don't know how I'd vote on that. But I I just, I want us to be more deliberate with these four quadrants because that's a key intersection as we look at, as as we look at development, I guess, to the further to the north and the thirty-five in the Sterling Ponds area and then over over to the other properties and then south on radio. I I just, I just want us to be more, I just want us to be very deliberate with with what we're doing. And if if they can bring in a project that that qualifies under B-three, I guess we'd have to consider it and move forward with it.
So, Mr. Morissette, when you say deliberate, are you suggesting that it could be a commercial where it's maybe a grocery store or a hotel or something that would help bring a service to the city?
Well, that's, that would be, I mean, I think we've all got our ideal, you know, there's parcels all over town where I'd say, geez, that'd be great to have something there, but it is about the free market. It is about the developer willing to put his capital at risk. And I recognize that. Just because I think it'd be a great idea to put a motel there or something else, doesn't necessarily mean that's what's going to happen. But I think part of the job that we have, especially as we're coming into this sort of this, this, this new area of town, is to send a message to developers and to the people and say, this is what we'd like to see there. I think that's part of our job.
I think it's reasonable to see some form of development that would be something our community could use. So I could see why you're saying that. I'd like to see some form of cooperation if we're going to do this with the city. And you were saying it doesn't necessarily conflict, but are there unforeseen problems if we were to go forward with this amendment, Mr. Simpson? Unforeseen problems?
If I could see them, they wouldn't be unforeseen. I I think you have, the council has to make a policy decision based on its its best idea of what the long term, best interest of the community is. So staff's recommendation is what it is. I think we we we've tried to be as thoughtful as what the council is, but certainly the council has the final, final say.
But just to be clear, though, if if we don't change it to B-three, we can't do any of the things that Mr. Morissette just listed. But it still gives them the freedom to do what they're trying to do. So I guess it buys us a little time, so to speak.
And flexibility.
Yeah. So if it's not going to upset their plans, I don't have a problem with the amendment.
I I just have a a technical question. Would we have to amend section seven for the future land use classification?
That would need to be amended to reflect that it is business three, commercial.
So it would be, so the amendment would be to classification of high density residential and and business?
Correct, for section seven.
And business.
And that, and that's, that's what I have in my amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, I can give this to the clerk too, so she can, if it passes.
I think I understand the amendment. It as changing those seven and eights for, based on the north and south parcel. R-three for the south, not B-three. But B-three for the north. With the understanding that that could include the same uses what would be proposed.
Go ahead, Nick.
Yep, I've I've just got a a couple of comments. I appreciate hearing from the developer. And, you know, secondhand about the property owner. And, you know, I I think we're in the process of doing a new comprehensive plan for the city. And I think one of the things that I hope we end up discussing a little bit in considering what our next comprehensive plan is going to be is what is the future of commercial? Because I think it's going to be really different than what we've had pre-pandemic and pre-internet. I think there are a lot of places in town that I'd want to see commercial development before I wanted to see it out there. Just because I think, you know, our downtown would be an ideal place for some commercial development. But brick and mortar is is different now. And I'm not sure what that's going to look like in the future. But, you know, I think that's something to consider here with that parcel and with those intersections. I don't think it's going to look like the city, I don't think the city of the future is going to look like the city of today. Also, there is a a real need for housing, whether it's apartments or single-family houses or whatever. And, yeah, I think that they're going, we've, we're a college town, we've always had a high percentage of renters. And now with the housing market, that is the affordable option for many people. And it's also a growth limiting factor for our businesses as, you know, how many employees they can get. So anyway, I see that is, I I see the proposed projects as fulfilling that need. And, yeah, like Councilman Morissette said, I've also got some qualms about stepping on the toes of private landowners as to what they can do with their property. You know, within limits. It's our, it's it's our job to look at the big picture. But, but, yeah, there are a lot of, there are a lot of things to weigh here. So I'm in, I'm in favor of this resolution because I think it sends a message, gives us some options. And, yeah, but we're there and I anticipate that this, these projects will come before us as a PUD or in some form. Before they start. So, thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to try to chime in if you can hear me okay. Hopefully, my internet's not too bad. I'm at a hotel and it can be less than perfect. So I think
Mr. Carroll, can you, can you volume up on your end?
I can try. I can also be louder. I'm very good at that.
Both would be good.
I'm, I'm told I'm too loud, so you have to understand my reluctance to be louder. How how's my volume now, folks?
Could be a little louder, Nick.
Okay, I I can get louder. So I I want to state that I don't see the change on the amendment that Mr. Morissette's proposed. I think that's fine. And if that allows us to to tap the brakes a little bit, I think that's fine. Am I still here? You guys okay?
Hang on, Nick. Hang on.
Try now.
Okay. Try talking now, Nick.
Am I doing okay? Can you hear me still? Okay. So I understand, supportive of what Mr. Morissette proposed, and that's absolutely fine. I think other council members have also spoken very well in terms of, we do need housing. And I understand it's a lot easier to do, we've always had a high percentage of of renters and that percentage is not necessarily going to go down. But to get to the goals that have been articulated by professionals we've talked to, we do need to have multifamily dense housing. It's it's a component. It's not the only answer, right? But it's a answer. So hearing and hearing those things, I appreciate what everyone said in terms of hearing a representative from the Thompson family and also from Saturday Properties. But I think we should go ahead and move forward and we have another chance to talk about this when the PUD comes back as well. So just want to echo those thoughts and thank you all.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we got a first and a second on the amendment. And everybody, everybody understand the amendment? You want to read it, Scott, read it one more time for us?
Okay.
So everybody understands exactly what the amendment is?
So the motion I made was, I'm only using the right words. Future land use classification, this would be section seven of the of the resolution. Future land use classification, the territory north of Paulson Road and south of Wisconsin Highway thirty-five is described in the staff report shall be assigned a tempor, oh, I did use temporary. Shall be assigned a zoning classification of B-three business highway. The territory south of Paulson Road is described in the staff report shall be assigned a zoning classification of R-three high density residential. And I believe Mr. Beer stood second in that.
Attorney Gerhardt, is it if we need to make a technical correction on any of those languages, are we able to do that as staff?
We're able to. I think we've all understood that the future land use classification for the property north is B-three. Likewise, the temporary zoning classification for the property north of the street is B-three, south is R-three, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
If you need to word smith it, I have no problem with that.
Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 Okay, all opposed? And then back to the original, the original motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you for indulging me.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, next one is, let's see. Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero-four, amending the parking control map. No parking on West Locust, and this is the first reading. Does the council have any questions on this? Okay, we'll move on then.
We do have public hearing on both readings now.
Oh, we do?
As re, as amended by the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll close council and open a public hearing on this. Does anybody have anything to say on the the parking control? Okay, we'll close the, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing again. And the council, did anybody have any questions on this? Okay. Otherwise, we'll move on to resolution approving the American Rescue Plan, the ARPA funds. The council has three options, providing the memo for the funding. When making a motion, the council should include which option they want to pass. Or if, or if they have one of their own. Okay? So I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the resolution approving the ARPA spending using the sixty thousand dollars for Emerald Ashbore mitigation.
Second.
First and a second, questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, next we'll move on to got my things all screwed up here. This is resolution approving state municipal agreement for the state let the local bridge project, this is for the Powell Avenue Bridge. This resolution would authorize the city administrator to sign the state municipal just agreement for a state let local bridge project to construct a bridge deck, relocation project on Powell Avenue Bridge. And I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the resolution approving state municipal agreement for a state let local bridge project.
Second.
Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
For our attorney, what does state let mean? Sounds like a small state. So it's Okay. Okay, thank you. It it seemed like it should be led or or something, but thanks, I appreciate the clarification.
I have one question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure who they should direct us to, Mr. Simpson, but I know I was on the committee for Powell Avenue construction for this bridge. And I was curious if it keeps, or if it keeps in mind some of the, and I know we hadn't gotten to this point yet, but some of the design details as far, so as far as it can be used for a biking bridge, where people can kind of look over the site too.
Yeah, I'm, my understanding is this is essentially a a basic reconstruction of the bridge deck itself. I think, given the construction prices right now, we are not likely to look at considerable design enhancements to what would be kind of a standard bridge deck replacement. City engineer, Kleski is is shaking his head. So this wouldn't be any kind of special cable, cable view sides or anything. This is likely to be new and improved existing design. And I think, though, I don't believe that there's even a modification in the width based on the or much modification in the width of what we have existing. So we're trying to get a sturdy, safe bridge across the river and that's, that's the primary goal. Anything above that would be our responsibility and likely delay the the construction.
Anybody else have anything else? Okay, first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to administrator's report. Anybody has any questions for Scott? Scott, if you have anything for us?
I just want to provide a reminder of the cookout conversations scheduled for this Thursday, the sixteenth, from six to seven thirty at the Hoffman Park Open Air Shelter. Take any questions you might have.
Anybody got anything for Scott? Okay, so we're in recess and close session.
Okay, so we're in a recessed and closed session for Wisconsin State Statute 19.8501E for the following purposes: deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. To wit, Cascade Avenue property and property in man value carpet park.
I make a motion, we move into closed session.
Second.
First and second, Kristi, can I have a roll call, please?
Bjork.
Yes.
Oden.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Morissette.
Aye.
Doning.
Aye.
Biersted.